We move on then to the question of parking finance.
Thank you, Chairman. I will introduce the report quite briefly, as I hope that it speaks of itself. Perhaps inevitably, the report does contain an error and perhaps equally inevitably, the error involves motorcycle parking. Appendix two, there is a revised version of that which I believe has been circulated. Just to explain, all that's happened there is that under casual parking, which is the second block, we down in appendix under Oxford Street Parking, the pay-by-phone motorcycle parking or credit card commission numbers got muddled up. So they were the right numbers in the version originally circulated, but they were in wrong places. The bottom line remains the same. So apologies for that. I've really only got one other thing to say in addition to what is set out in the report. And as I think probably all members of the committee know, and for the reasons that are spelled out, not quite in capital letters at the beginning of the report, parking operations, parking management purposes of delivering a specific financial outcome. We can attempt to predict the financial outcome of parking operations. Indeed, we are bound to do so. But once the budget is set, we cannot manage what actually happens subsequently in order to make our predictions come true.
Thank you. We have in the audience, Simon Davy requested before the meeting began whether he could ask one particular question. So I want to give you the opportunity to ask that.
First of all, it's obviously the CUP scheme from January is based on lack of income and it's a fund-based thing. And the idea that it's due to congestion, which quite clearly isn't due to congestion. But that's quite the point I was making. My idea was that instead of that scheme going ahead, alter the resident permits and base them on the categories of council tax grading whereby the lowest grade of council tax paid £115 a year, which is the current online fee, and people on the top grade of council tax pay £200 a year. This would bring them in about another £3 million, according to the figures here, I suspect. I don't know. But I mean, that seems to be a far better and simpler way of raising money. Maybe it's my scheme which is going to save far more congestion of people driving around in parking spaces. And I'd just like to pose that as a possible... Let me tell you something.
Just two brief responses, Mr. Chairman. And I think the first thing, as I must say, I'm bound to say this, is that the whole rationale for policy review is set out exhaustively in the evidence and the argument that was presented to Cabinet, trying to prove it. And it is not, without being complimentary, to add to the position on this, it is not to do with any desire to raise income. In relation to resident permit scheme based on income, I suppose intuitively, that has certain attractions. But I think the question one would have to ask in relation to that is that how such a charging action could relate back to a proper transport objective? And if transport objectives have to run to life and justify everything that we do in the parking arena. So it has been possible for some local authorities, for example, to charge differentially on basis of the emissions, the carbon emissions from vehicles and the bigger and more carbon emitting vehicle, the higher the cost of the resident's permit. If that's justifiable, that objective relates to transport. In terms of our ability to factor in, as it were, affordability, that I think will take a resident's permit charging into the realms of taxation by another net.
It's not affordability, it's your grade of council tax. I mean, if you live in a smart house, you may not have any income, you've got a capital value there. That's your problem, that you've got a grading of A or of G, whatever it is, I mean, the top grade. So it's based on that, £10, £100 a year, you're bringing substantial more income. And I'm going to do with assessing their personal income. People have calculated their actual income, which is kind of...
I do understand and I do sympathize with what Simon Davy is making, but I think the fact remains that charging for residence permits on that basis, which is the same basis on which we tax people locally, would give the appearance that we are managing parking as a means of tax recovery and not as an instrument of transport policy. I think in the end, that would be a question for lawyers to determine as to whether that interpretation is correct. But that would be my immediate reaction to that proposal. So I think we would have a legal problem with this.
Thank you very much. Shall we go back to committee members? Questions, questions?
Can I just make a point on that? I think it'd be worth getting Lee, who's been Cabinet member, to respond formally to Mr. Davy's request and actually have the chance to consider it rather than sort of ask him to answer here on the line. But I agree with what Lee said.
Any other questions? No questions? On that side?
Well, let you go first. Go on.
If I understand this, 4.1 in the report shows that every year, we've actually achieved less surplus than budgeted. Is that correct?
No, councillor. In the first of the two years, we achieved more income than budgeted.
Okay, yeah, sorry, that's true. Yeah. Actually slightly. But after that, every year, it's been less than budgeted.
It's huge, right?
Okay.
Assuming that we run a deficit against budget.
The outturn for 2011-12 is expected to be £6 million less than originally budgeted?
No, councillor. At the moment, the report that you will receive later in the meeting from the Strategy Director for Finance is currently projecting a £2 million shortfall against surplus. Although I have to say that that is on an improvement trend, so there is room for that number to improve between now and the year end.
Right. So a £2 million below the top of the budget, okay. Next year's in appendix two, 2011-12. Okay, so that's the £2 million there that you're referring to, is it? The second appendix?
That's right, that's right.
Okay. What's the forecast for next year, despite the budget setting process that's been put in?
We have not yet made a forecast for next year. There is a forecast in the existing budget book which was set a year ago. But we are about to go into a process of re-examining those budgets. And this year, we will do it fundamentally differently because we don't want to be presented the same issues that we've had to wrestle with in the last three years again in 2012-13. So this year, unlike in previous years, we will be effectively reconstructing the parking budget from bases of taking the whole thing to pieces and assembling it again piece by piece and making sure that every assumption on every line is justified.
If we're... As a business, we must have some idea what income we're expecting to generate next year.
Well, we have some idea. And I think if I can refer you to, I think I have more telling diagrams in the report on page 24. I think that shows you how the balance of income in the parking budget, there has been a structural shift happening. Over the years, we are making less money, put it that way, from issuing fixed penalty notices. And that is what we intend, because we want motorists to comply. And we are making more money from paid-for casual parking, because again, that is what we intend, because we wish the motorists to park compliantly. That structural shift, I don't believe has been fully reflected in the budgets for the last three years. But I am personally committed to ensuring that next year's budget does reflect that structural shift.
So you would expect us to make less money next year in accordance with this structural shift, which is a trend that you would expect to continue?
I would certainly expect us to make less money from parking enforcement than we have done historically. What happens in terms of casual income remains to be seen. But the report that Cabinet approved on parking policy review, for example, in its financial implications section, estimated that once all those changes are implemented, that might produce between £4 and £7 million additional casual income. It didn't assume any... From paid-for parking, it didn't assume any additional income from enforcement. Because we work on the assumption that people will park as compliantly in the future as they are today.
And that £7 million will be generated mainly through the introduction of the new charging policy?
That £4 to £7 million is an estimate, it's no more than that, an estimate of what additional revenue would be generated by paid-for parking on the evenings and on Sundays.
Couple more for me.
Take one more and see whether anybody else wants to ask one then.
I note that there hasn't been any economic impact analysis undertaken by the Council. Various people, local businesses, by way through to survey, study and daily standard today, suggest that this would be very detrimental on businesses in Central London and the economy in Central London. How are you sure, on the basis that you've not done any economic analysis, that there will not be a detrimental impact on our income, such as rates etc., through these charges?
The Council has indicated that it is very willing to view the impact of these changes. And if they are shown to be detrimental, they can have an impact, but too very inappropriate. Now, we haven't, to be fair, so far as I know, yet stated what the scope of that economic impact analysis will be. Because I would hope that it is better found in the period than the one that was outlined today.
Well, actually, I'd rather we did something before things closed down. That devils are bringing that...
Any questions?
Yeah, please. To review what's happened in the past, this structural change in the Council's income not only affected the Council's income, but it affected the lives and jobs of hundreds of council staff who had to leave the Council because of the Council's... Because the Council then didn't have enough money to pay them. Either that year or going forward. And I think that is the real impact of the Council's failure to properly predict parking income. And in any other business, the failure to do that would have led to severe consequences for people running that business. That isn't happened here. That's the first thing. Second, going forward, I understand that the Council, you've admitted that going forward, the Council is to quote in "uncharted territory", and you have no idea, or you will not tell us, what the impact on our income will be of drivers deciding to come or not to come to the West End, having introduced charges of £4.80 an hour, or the impact on people who work in the West End and currently park for free. You haven't given us any assessment of what that's going to be for penalty charges. How can you sit here now, with just a few months left, and tell us that we're both in uncharted territory, that you have no idea what the impact is going to be of these new charges, at a time when the West End of next year will be subject to unprecedented activity or intensity we have never seen before in our lifetimes because of the Olympics, other activities? Why on earth are you as officers recommending, recommending the Council to embark on down through uncharted territory when a substantial amount of the Council's income and therefore the jobs and livelihoods of hundreds of people are dependent on parking income? How can the Council's officers be so irresponsible?
Mr. Chairman, could I... I think Paul's making a very political point.
It's not a political point, it's shared by people across the city.
It's unfair for you to be aiming this at the officers when I think Melbourne, as a Cabinet member...
Can we just pause a bit? There's a bit of the picture that, I don't know whether it's my lack of understanding or whether it's a bit of misspeaking or whether somebody else has overlooked the picture. But I had understood that some sort of work and analysis had gone on somewhere in this Council on this sort of impact. Is that... Is there a denial that any of those have gone at all? Or maybe there are some other people who may have done something which might not be a formal economic impact analysis, but there's been some sort of review.
I think it would be fair to say, Chairman, that the rationale that underpinned policy changes that Cabinet approved were based, as they should be, on transport considerations. I think the second thing to bear in mind is that the policy changes which will be coming in January are overwhelmingly experimental. The Council has already given some of them. It is as if they have other consequences that some have predicted, then they will be changed. But I have to say that in all the assertions that have been made about the potential impact of these changes, I have seen nothing that convinces, nothing that convinces, not least because the sort of predictions that we have seen aired today are advanced in the complete absence of any evidence about how the economic model relates back to parking behaviour, for example. And there were some very wild figures being bandied about which do bear a moment's examination. When the Council introduced parking controls on Saturday, it was a very similar human cry, which very quickly died away. In relation to specific points about penalty charges, I think we have been very explicit about our expectations in relation to penalty charges. What we are predicting as an additional expenditure on enforcement will be balanced by penalty income and there will be no net benefits and there will be no net costs to the Council. I think the final thing that I would say is that the lupid direction the Council and the modeling of references is a very good reason to introduce these changes now because at the moment, traffic, parking, use of the curbside during the evenings and on Sunday, which are some of the busiest times in the whole week, are not well managed. And I think it's to be...
Tony, do you have further questions?
No, I just think we should try and echo the evidence. I know people have got very strong views on both sides. And I think the fact that we are listening and continue to listen, and as Colin Bowers has said, you know, if there is an impact on business, we will react accordingly. So we are going to measure the impact. And as Leif has said, this is a traffic issue, congestion issue. And I think we have to get out of our bunkers on both sides of the arguments and actually listen to the evidence.
We'd like some evidence.
Today's evening standard was a typical example of lack of evidence. Lots of, you know, anybody can exaggerate figures. Those figures are, you know, about as accurate as most things the Labour Party ever come out with. So, you know, I think we have to work for the figures and try and make this meeting about financial scrutiny of the Council and not partly political points by Paul.
Well, Chairman, I would like to pursue this issue of the assumptions that Leif and his colleagues are making. If they haven't got actual figures, what assumptions are you making about the level of discretionary visits to the West End based on an increase of £4.80 an hour? Have you made any assumptions at all? Is it a 1% reduction in the number of people coming to the West End to go to the theatre or the cinema or restaurants? Is it a 10% reduction? Have you made any assumptions at all about the impact of that on the income that you're going to get? Have you made any impact, any studies, any assumptions about the impact on visitors on a Sunday who may well choose to go to either the West Fields rather than come to Oxford Street to go shopping? Have you made any assumption, will that be a 1%, a 5%, a 10% or whatever reduction? Or have you made no assumptions at all?
I think before you answer, I would say I think it is reasonable to inquire as to what the impact of a particular change in policy may be on the general economic environment, even if it may be unreasonable and illegal to consider the impact on our income. So if you separate those two things, that might be awful.
I think, Chairman, if the meeting is to go down the direction of a review of the underpinning logic behind the policy review, then I would find it helpful to have my colleagues from Built Environment who have led on that here with me because my responsibility and responsibility of my team is to implement it rather than production. That said, I think I can answer, Commissioner, to the extent that in the Council's overall budget re-planning, we have not made any assumptions about any knock-on in economic consequence arising from the implementation review. Indeed, it is fundamental to the rationale behind the review that the implementation of the measure is necessary to improve the management of the city and a well-managed city is an underpinning of all of Westminster's economic prosperity.
But you didn't answer the... Sorry, you didn't answer the points about any assumptions that you've made or you're going to make when you reconstruct your parking budget about the impact on behaviour of introducing the charge of £4.80 an hour in the evenings and on Sunday afternoons. And I think that's...
Sorry, Paul, I think he has answered it to the...
Well, the economic... Not the economic welfare.
I think, if I... I'm very happy to answer that because I think that does go to the heart of the business of the year, which is how we go about budgeting. I mean, as part of reconstructing that budget, yes, we absolutely will have to make assumptions about the impact that, you know, the new arrangements will make on current parking behaviour. And so, for example, it arrived at that number that was in the Cabinet member report of additional casual income of between £4 and £7 million. Assumptions were made that current occupancy levels in paid-for parking spaces might reduce. So those are quite conservative assumptions because we're assuming that for a time after the measures are brought in, the likely reduction in existing occupancy levels.
Can I see a copy of that... Well, can I see a copy of those assumption testings and those estimates?
Yes, of course you can.
Thank you.
Last one, further question?
My colleague. I'm going to let Andrew ask a question instead because I think we've...
I think, first of all, I think it's extraordinary that Paul D'Amolber is suggesting that we should aim to issue more PCN bases just to keep people employed. I mean, I think that would be totally against our understanding. Well, that's what I was going to say. More fundamentally, in terms of the projections, and Paul has said that if you're a business, you make projections and people get into trouble if their outturn isn't the case. But I mean, is it actually possible to make an assessment of our parking behaviour and the impact of new changes on Western economy in the context of all the other things which are happening to the UK, UK economy, which will have an impact on the West End? I mean, we saw the report in the standard day, but it seemed to be based on very little evidence. And actually, is there an economic way of doing this that actually makes any sense?
It is difficult because at any one point in time, there are so many factors that may be influencing what actually happens. I think historically, and I can recall internal debates within the Council about what was happening in parking. And I think it was often assumed that one of the main drivers was the general state of the London economy. And that that was then manifest in terms of how willing people were to run the risk of getting a ticket or how willing they were to pay for parking as a meter. But I don't see that so clearly when we go through the numbers that we have in front of us this evening. I mean, if one thinks back to 2008, '09, 2009, '10, we had the credit crunch, we had a recession. As it were, the orthodox traditional wisdom would have had it that that would have had an impact on parking income. And hey, presto, we've got some major reductions in parking income. But is that attributable to the state of the Central London economy? Well, I don't think that's clear because although income from fixed penalty notices declined radically, income from casual parking didn't decline at all. In fact, it rose slightly. So there are many factors here that are influencing what happens in the parking financial model. And it will be a methodological challenge in assessing the impact of what we're going to do in January, separating out those factors that are specific to Westminster's parking policies and those factors that may be happening elsewhere in the economy, especially with the economic backdrop as confused.
Just another point. So I mean, looking at the chart on page 24, I mean, in terms of what we're aiming to do with the management of parking, doesn't that seem like a success? Our compliance is up and casual parking income is up as well. So of course, there's advantages for the Council to be able to budget what money we are going to receive. But in terms of reaching the targets which we should be trying to reach at Parkies, doesn't that show success?
It shows policy success. In fact, it shows very considerable policy success because everything the Council set out to do under the banner of common sense parking was achieved. The number of PCNs issued dropped as it was supposed to. The levels of compliance increased as they were supposed to. So policy terms, it was a great success. What didn't work was the financial forecasting associated with those policy changes.
Jake, do you have a question on this?
Yes, I apologize for my lateness. Just a small question. I do wonder, would it be possible to have a breakdown of the extent of the loss of revenue as a result of car clubs?
We could try, Commissioner. Although to do that, one would have to make some assumptions that will be difficult to substantiate about the behaviour of people before they join the car club. I'm not sure at the moment that we have sufficient data. We can certainly have a look at that.
Yes, what I'm thinking of is parking bays which previously were a pay-in display, which are now a car club. What difference in revenue that will actually be?
We could certainly look at that and write to other members of the committee very shortly. Okay, thank you very much. We've got a long agenda. I'm sorry, you have had a lot of questions.
It's important.
You've had a lot of questions. I think we're going to have to move on. Can we... Thank you for coming and thank you for this report. As recommendations, can we note that, first of all, the remarks that this is a matter that is not... where policy cannot be determined by the financial outturn and all the work behind it. Secondly, can we note that the importance of trying to get everything into order in time for the Olympics? Thirdly, can we note that your strongly expressed views that this is a necessity to tidy up and diminish congestion in the city? Fourthly, can we note your kind agreement with suppliers for a copy of the assumptions etc. that lie behind some of this, as offered to the board? Sixthly, we've got to six. Can we note Andrew's remarks that in terms of increasing compliance, reducing casual parking, reducing PCNs, there is a policy success there? And I think I'd make two other...
And I think I'd make two other points lastly, which are, first of all, that, sorry, in addition to asking you to look into whether you could produce some sort of brief review as to what the loss of revenue due to change of bays to car lot bays might be, in addition to that, can we first of all ask that in doing the budget preparation for next year and going forward, if you can provide enough of a range, in addition to best point estimate to assist the finance department in calculating, that would probably be assistance. And my last point would be, given the difficulty in modelling, et cetera, whether it is worth a while, getting together with the University of Westminster or somebody else, or one of these institutes or another, to see whether someone at no cost to us might be willing to do some sort of research on the most effective ways to assist you in modelling this, all these things in the future. Does that sound reasonable? Anybody else like to add any, or take a yard?
Just one. One, very good one. You said that you're going to monitor this policy going forward, and if there's any sign of detrimental impact, you're going to review this policy. I think it's useful for us to know how you measure detrimental impact.
Okay, thanks for that. We'll move on to the next side of it. And thank you very much, Melvin, for waiting. If Melvin, you've got...